Good evening. I would like to call this work session of the Forest Grove City Council to order. The topic is, I'll go to my agenda, the topic is Parks and Recreation Cost Recovery Plan. A reminder that no public comment will be taken and the council will take no formal action. I'm going to turn it over to our Parks and Rec Director, Anne Lane. For attendance purposes, Council Gustin, Council President Rippey, Council Martinez, Council Marshall, Council Valenzuela, and I, Mayor Wenzel. Council Ewing is absent.
Thank you for your time this evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's work session provides us an opportunity to continue working toward a long-term sustainable cost recovery plan for Parks and Recreation. Once adopted and implemented, the cost recovery plan will allow for flexibility in being responsive to our growing community in a timely and consistent manner. Parks and Recreation began this work in 2021. At that time, we very intentionally purchased and implemented CivicRec, an online registration system that also captures and generates data. We needed to start collecting good data if we were going to work on making changes to our current condition. Then in 2022, City Council adopted an amended fee schedule that provided greater autonomy in the establishment of recreation program fees. This was done in anticipation of establishing a recreation program, which we have made great progress in doing over the last two years. We really started to dive deep in 2023 when we brought on a consultant to help get us to where we are today. Over the past 11 months, we have held joint work sessions, a community stakeholder workshop, and a partner network workshop. We've spent hours with the consultant to compile and analyze a mountain of data as well. At our joint work session with City Council and the Parks and Recreation Commission in January, we introduced the concepts of cost recovery and subsidy. We learned about service categories, cost of service, and beneficiary of service as key components to a financially sustainable strategy. We clarified willingness to pay versus ability to pay and need versus want. We also explored differences between personal interest and the common good. We continued efforts at the joint work session with City Council and the Parks and Recreation Commission in March, when we got hands-on with a beneficiary of service exercise. You worked in small groups to organize service categories from common good to exclusive benefit. The result of your efforts from that night influenced the final cost recovery model we are presenting at this evening's work session. We have a follow-up to tonight's work session scheduled for this fall, and thereafter, we plan to work toward a resolution and adoption of a cost recovery plan so we can then move on to implementation. Although this is not a glamorous, popular, or fun project, it is an important one. We recognize this is a subject that is often met with complication and resistance. But we need to bear in mind that we are charged with the responsibility to be stewards of taxpayer dollars. We are tasked to serve all members of our community equitably. We need to manage our resources thoughtfully, and we need to also keep an eye toward the future and plan accordingly. It is important to note that City Code Section 3401 states, and I quote, "The philosophy is to base user fees on cost of service, so the city will be able to recover the costs associated with delivering a service to an individual or group. By recovering the cost of providing a service, the result of the community," or the rest of the community, rather, "is not subsidizing services benefiting individuals." It is also important to note that City Code 3402B states we are required to complete a cost of service study every five years. Therefore, once the cost recovery plan is put in place, we will begin to establish this routine and will schedule subsequent reviews every five years from that point forward. We believe we are meeting the requirements as described in City Code 3402 with the cost recovery plan we are proposing, and that it will provide a rational process for setting fees and charges once adopted and implemented. Additionally, the expansion of the department to add a recreation division compounds the importance of addressing how fees for services are determined and administered. As classes and programs are added to the department's list of services, a method and system are fundamental components for long-term financial sustainability and fiscal responsibility. The unique approach we have chosen to take with this effort provides us with an opportunity to proactively assess and improve the equity dimensions of our community by incorporating a lens of fairness and equity for decision-making. Goal number four of the 2024-2025 City Council Goals is to enhance recreation opportunities for all. With the formation of the new recreation division, we are well on our way to achieving this City Council goal. However, without a cost recovery plan in place, we will be hard-pressed to ensure long-term sustainability of that division and the accompanying services it provides, especially after COVID monies expire. The objective attached to City Council Goal, to the City Council Goal, is a two-part statement that reads, "Complete the Parks and Recreation Fee Study and Develop a Long-Term Funding Structure for the Fund for All Fund." Part one is to complete the Parks and Recreation Fee Study. We are at the tail end of the project, but still have a few more steps to go before we can consider this part of the objective met. Part two is to develop a long-term funding structure for the Fund for All Fund. This piece will follow part one of the objective and come before you in the form of a proposed policy this fall. Intended outcomes for the City Council Goal include increased quality of life for a happy and healthy community, fiscal sustainability for maintenance and operations, accessible recreation opportunities for all ages and abilities. We believe that if we have a stable base from which to develop recreation opportunities, the better positioned we will be to deliver services that increase quality of life and influence a happy and healthy community. The cost recovery plan we are proposing is in direct response to addressing the need to be fiscally responsible for the department's maintenance and operations. Without the plan, we have limited direction and are left to make assumptions about some financial decisions. By establishing a cost recovery plan that provides a level of subsidy by the city for those programs identified with the greatest common good, we increase our ability to make recreation opportunities accessible to a greater expanse of the community. Every City Council value is connected to this project. By considering the cost recovery plan we are proposing, City Council is demonstrating fiscal financial stewardship and a responsibility to management of finite city financial resources. The cost recovery plan we are proposing is in direct response to community members' desire to have policies and programs in place that represent their interests equitably. We can level the playing field, so to speak, in our delivery of services through the incorporation of a cost recovery plan. As stated previously, and I cannot emphasize this enough, by establishing a cost recovery plan that provides a level of subsidy by the city for those programs identified with the greatest common good, we increase our ability to make recreation opportunities accessible to a greater expanse of the community. The cost recovery plan is strategic planning at its finest. The plan we are proposing is a proactive approach to long-term department stability that is intended to maintain resources through challenging times. To launch this initiative, we first set some goals for ourselves. Do not increase our level of dependency on the general fund. Address growing community demands and interests for Parks and Recreation programs and services. Expand programs and services offered by Parks and Recreation. Provide a model that is responsive to growth and aligns staffing to service levels. Then we generated some intended outcomes. Create a transparent and accurate understanding of costs associated with all Parks and Recreation services and facilities. Establish a routine examination of Parks and Recreation cost of service. Adopt a defensible methodology and philosophy on how Parks and Recreation fees are determined and administered that incorporates a lens of fairness and equity. Solidify an internal funding system that funds the Fund for All Fund, which is the scholarship program, that augments outside financial contributions and continually maintains a balance of funds available for use by those facing financial barriers. And then a list of objectives followed. Confirm a commitment to the cost recovery plan by Parks and Recreation staff, city administrators, and city council. We are proposing council consider this tonight. Complete the cost recovery plan project. The consultant's piece has been completed, and it is now up to staff and council to shepherd it through to completion status. Develop a cost recovery policy. A draft version is currently being prepared. Implement the cost recovery plan and the policy. You may recall this image from the prior joint work session held in March with the consultant and the Parks and Recreation Commission. The model you see here is a blend of the various iterations that were submitted by community members, staff, Parks and Recreation Commission members, and City Council to the consultant. Those submissions influenced the placement of the categories along the continuum as well as the cost recovery targets. The model we are proposing for adoption and implementation is shown here. Definitions of the categories as well as the proposed cost recovery plan, as shown here, were provided to you in your council packet in advance and should act as a quick reference guide moving forward. Along the left side is the range of low-cost recovery to high-cost recovery. Low-cost recovery can also be described as high subsidy. Programs and activities with a low-cost recovery requires the most amount of financial subsidy. High-cost recovery can also be described as low subsidy. Programs and activities with a high-cost recovery requires the least amount of financial subsidy. Subsidy is the amount of taxpayer money applied to a program or activity to cover the cost associated with that program or activity. Subsidy is taxpayer money. For example, if the total cost of a program is $10 and is expected to recover 60% of the cost, then the customer pays $6, and the city applies $4 of taxpayer money from the general fund to cover the remainder. Across the bottom of the continuum is the range of common good to exclusive benefit. Common good programs and activities are those that are identified as essential, of high value, are intended to impact social and environmental issues and needs, and/or do not create competition with the nonprofit or private sectors. Exclusive benefit programs and activities are considered discretionary. Our individualized services are provided in response to specialized interests, have a limited social and/or environmental impact, and compete with the nonprofit and private sectors. All the programs, activities, and services provided by Parks and Recreation fall into one of the 10 categories identified along the continuum. Each of the 10 categories has a corresponding cost recovery goal range. Having a cost recovery goal range for each category provides a margin of flexibility when pricing services. For example, we may have a brand-new activity we're launching that we aren't completely certain will succeed on the first runout. With a cost recovery range, we have the flexibility to take that activity to market at a price on the low end of the range to help make it more attractive for the consumer to try out. And for an established activity that has a proven history of high demand, we have the flexibility to maximize the cost recovery opportunity by pricing it on the high end of the range. By establishing categories and assigning all programs, activities, and services to a category that has set cost recovery goals, we will deliver our services at a rate within a prescribed range that is commensurate to the identified level of common good. As the Parks and Recreation team came to understand our current condition and formulate the steps we needed to take to get where we are today, we worked with the consultant to examine data gathered from fiscal year 2122. Fiscal year 2122 provided us with the most accurate and up-to-date data available. At that time, we had the CivicRec system in place. Outdoor athletic rental facility fees had not yet been placed on a moratorium, and we were back to near regular operations post-COVID. As the department continues to expand programming and fine-tune data collection methods, we will be better positioned when the next cost-of-service analysis takes place. This was one of those situations where you just need to start somewhere and get moving forward. The figures reflected on this slide are final figures from fiscal year 2122. The categories are in the same order left to right as they are on the continuum from the previous slide and in your packet. The far-left category is the most heavily subsidized category, and as you move toward the right, each category becomes less subsidized. The rust-colored bar in each category represents the total amount of revenue captured, and the navy-blue colored bar in each category represents the total amount of expenditure. You may note that the category "open access" is not listed on this diagram. The open-access category is 100% subsidized and represents the parks, trails, and open spaces in our system that are made open and available to the public without exclusive use by any one party or individual. When we match the cost recovery targets as indicated on the proposed cost recovery plan model to actual cost recovery, we can see more clearly which categories are currently meeting or exceeding their cost recovery targets and those that are not. The rust-colored bar in each category represents the actual cost recovery, and the navy-blue colored bar in each category represents the target cost recovery. The navy-blue bars or target cost recovery bars increase as you move from left to right along the diagram. Our goal is to more closely align actual cost recovery to target cost recovery. The proposed cost recovery plan shown here is the hinge point of tonight's work session. We recognize this is a lot of heavy, complex information that can be tough to digest. Jessie and I are happy to answer any questions you may have, and we thank you for your time and commitment to this effort.
Thank you. So what do you need from us tonight? What feedback or any questions you need answered or?
Well, consensus on the categories and the cost recovery goals and the continuum that you see here. If we can get consensus, thumbs up, that nods something on this, then that gives us an opportunity to proceed.
Okay, so let's start with the categories. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about any of the categories? Council President Rippey.
First of all, Anne, I'd like to thank you and your staff and the consultants for all the work that you've done on this. It's excellent work, and you're to be commended for the detail that you went through. There's only one question I have, and that's more of a, you know, the devil's in the details as we implement this, and there's going to probably be some adjustments as you go along. But anyway, one question I have is with regard to the category on rentals, and that is the athletic fields. Going back to my own youth, go down to the ballpark and have a pickup game of baseball. Am I going to have to rent that as far as this is concerned, or is that going to be open access when nobody else is on there?
The only time the rentals category kicks into play is when a group or an individual wants exclusive use of a space. Exclusive use of a space then eliminates the opportunity for the general public to access it. So if you want to go play a game of pickup ball with your buddies at the field, and you ride your bikes out there, you can jump on the field at no cost, and we don't need to know that you're there. You just go do it. That's why we have these parks. But if you want to ensure that you have that space exclusively for your group or your team, we recommend that you make a reservation, and then you have exclusive use, and that's when a rental fee is applied.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So the graph you showed us a little bit ago, that was before we froze that, I'm looking at the, going back to Council President, the rental?
Mm-hmm. This was prior to the moratorium.
So this is when we were, this is with the rental fees we were charging?
That's correct.
Before we made the freeze to make sure it was fair?
That's correct.
Have, okay. Thank you.
And I also would like to remind you that rentals includes everything that we rent, so picnic shelters, baseball fields, everything.
Pavilion.
Yep.
Yeah, Council President Rippey.
One other question. That goes all the way to the far right when we talk about food and beverage. Who runs these concessions? Is this something that the city contracts with vendors to run these things?
This is such a tiny segment of our operation. This is really when you come to the pool and you want to buy a pair of goggles, or you need to buy a swim diaper, or a lock for your locker. That's what's in this category. Very, very tiny things. But beyond those items, we don't have any concessions currently.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and then now can we, Maria, can we look at the slide that has the cost recovery percentages? So now I'm going to ask the council to look, or what, the target. I think it was the continuum. It's maybe we should go back. Maybe you're already there. I'm sorry, Maria, for confusing you. The continuum that shows, okay, yeah. Thank you. Sorry, you're already there. So it's my fault. Can council look at the cost recovery percentages to give any feedback to Director Lane? Yeah, I have a question. So it kind of goes with what Council President Rippey was saying about rentals and the beginning level, but I think I already know it. So like if you have a T-ball, a T-ball team wants exclusive use, that would be a rental. That's not a beginner-level skill. The beginner-level skills are like swim lessons?
Yes, so beginner-level lessons, and we have examples with your definitions, beginning swimming lessons, youth pickleball, yoga, volleyball camp. Those things fall into the beginner-level programs. So these are the services that Forest Grove Parks and Recreation organizes and makes available to the public. These are not services that are provided by other entities. So that's why T-ball is not listed on there.
Rental, yeah. What is personalized services?
Personalized services is one-on-one swimming lessons. That's something that we did pre-COVID, and those have unfortunately not found their way back into our offerings. We have a lot of community members that have high interest in this. We want to bring it back, but we don't want to bring it back until we know how to cost-recover for it. So it's temporarily on hold, but there is a need in the community and a demand.
I mean, me personally, I think, you know, yeah, I think the cost recovery looks really good, and I know you've all worked on it a lot. I guess one question I had is with the stakeholder meetings that took place last March, community engagement is, you know, really difficult for a lot of us in the public sector, right? Like, we always want lots of community engagement. So I guess I'm just wondering, in those stakeholder meetings, did you invite, I shouldn't call them stakeholder meetings anymore, but in those steering committee meetings, did you invite representatives that used each of these services?
Yes. Yes, we did. Yes, we worked with all of the leadership staff of all the divisions to help us get connected to folks that utilize our services. We invited a number of folks to participate in that exercise.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Council President Rippey.
Thank you. I have one more question that has to do with this continuum, which I like. It's the range, the percentage range on each one, which seems that it lends itself to some subjectivity. But that could also lend itself to some accusations of discrimination or favoritism over one group over another group, or this over that, or these people get a subsidy, these people don't. How are we, how are you going to resolve that to ensure that the public has faith and trust that you're being honest and fair?
So we, as a Parks and Recreation team, went through every single class program, anything that had money attached to it, that there was a transfer with a customer. And we put them all together. We categorized them, and our focus was common good to exclusive benefit. No other, nothing else played into that, not how much does this group bring to the city, or, I mean, any of those other kind of arbitrary things. It was what has the greatest common good and what is more exclusive? What is an exclusive benefit? Purchasing goggles is a very exclusive benefit. That is, a purchase you're making solely for yourself. Walking through the park, that's open access. That, those are easy. You know, you start to get to the middle, and it does get a little gray. But we, as a team, as new programs are coordinated and put together, we decide as a team what category that best fits into, and what are our measures to justify that? Is it available to everyone? Is it available to a certain group or a certain skill set? If you have an advanced skill set, you're going to have a program that's in the intermediate and advanced skills, and that's going to have a higher cost recovery. But as described earlier, the range gives us flexibility to work within also, but it also sets boundaries. So we can't overcharge for something. We can't take advantage of programs that are thriving by saying, well, we're going to just keep jacking the price up. So it puts constraints on us, but it allows us a little bit of room to introduce new programs at an entry-level price, too.
Okay, I'm going to be a little bit more
Sure.
specific. So when it comes to a club or a nonprofit organization wanting to rent the football field there at Thatcher Park, and you have two groups, are those two groups going to be treated, let's say they're renting out, are you going to treat one group at 85% cost recovery and the other group at 110%? How do you, how are you going to ensure that there's fairness and equity in that?
Right. So every year, you folks adopt a fee schedule, and on that fee schedule is an itemized list of those rented rental spaces, shelters, pool, ball fields, and those numbers are adopted by you every year. So we don't have, we don't have the ability to move around in that range, but that's intended But that, that's, that's intended to stay on a fee schedule. Um, I hope that.
Okay, yes, that clarifies it and explains it to the public. So the public understands that we have it. This is not replacing a fee schedule. We still have a fee schedule that is approved by council.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, that was going to be, I think my question was that this continuum or this cost recovery plan is going to be the the blueprint or drive the fee schedule, fee schedule. So every year counsel will get to look at that, vote on it and.
Yes.
Correct. Did you need, oh, counsel, counsel Marshall?
So with the intermediate advanced skills and the beginner level skills, um, just for example, there's no soccer. Soccer being a, it, I don't know if it's considered rec or considered competitive, but like FC West. There's nothing that we offer as a city for that, but there is hundreds of kids that do that. Are we going to be treating them as intermediate, advanced, or a beginner level? Because it is very young. They're starting at kindergarten, first grade. That would, in my mind, that would be a beginner level sport.
We treat that as a rental.
As a rental.
If they are seeking exclusive use of a public space, that's treated as a rental. Parks and Recreation doesn't offer sports programming. I, I, there's no surprise with that. If we did, we would have those programs along the continuum in different categories. We don't do that because we don't want to create competition in the community either. So if a group wants to have exclusive access to a space, they have all right to reserve it. If they don't want to reserve it and they want to show up and play in the space, they're welcome to do that.
Were there any other can, like, questions that you had for counsel that I'm forgetting right now? So we went over the categories, we went over the cost re, does the cost recovery, can I get a thumbs up or nods? Does this look okay? Okay, so those were the two that I remember.
Uh, the categories and the cost recovery goals, the continuum.
Yeah, I think it looks good. Any further questions? Yeah, thank you. And it was a really good job. Thanks. Okay, I'm going to adjourn this work session. I'm going to give it a minute for I'm going to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is Forest Grove Senior and Community Center, and I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Paul Downey.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Wait for the PowerPoint to come up. All right. The purpose of this work session is to discuss potential management options for the Forest Grove Senior and Community Center. We recently got a letter from the Forest Grove Senior, Senior Community Center Nonprofit advising the city council. They wish to exit the agreement with the city effective November fifteenth. This is enough firm data, it's more what's kind of called squishy date. They're, they're willing to work with us on that date. So it's not an absolute drop dead. We have to have everything done and finished by the fifteenth. History, property was donated in nineteen seventy-two for the use of Forest Grove Senior Center. Senior Center facility was constructed in nineteen seventy-eight and expanded a couple of times since then using community development block grant funds. City of Forest Grove owns the property and all improvements that are on the property. City has entered into an operations agreement with the Forest Grove Senior Community Center, a five oh one C three nonprofit in nineteen ninety-two. That agreement was amended in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eighteen, and the two thousand and eighteen version is what is in effect today. For the history of the Forest Grove Senior, Senior Center Corporation was established in nineteen seventy-two. Their bylaws stipulate the purpose is to fight elder abuse through education intervention and referral, enable older adults and people with disabilities to maximize their independence by helping access essential services. Also to raise funds in support of the purpose and to administer and operate the senior center. History, the current service model contained the operation agreement is the city pays all utility and structural maintenance, except for, we don't pay the natural gas, but we pay all city utilities. Nonprofit pays for all staff and offers all programs. Nonprofit pays for the day-to-day maintenance of the grounds and the interior of the building. Nonprofit has exclusive free use of the building to generate revenue towards expenses. The operation agreement is long-term to enable, try to enable stable operations. The operations agreement further stipulates it requires the appointment of a city council liaison and a city staff single point of contact. The operator may assign for sublease premises subject to city approval to third persons or organizations, and the senior center may retain all fees and charges from those leases. Are there any questions to this point?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay.
Thank you.
Senior Center facility, the building's approximately forty percent utilized. Not saying they only use forty percent of the building, but time-wise, it's about forty percent utilized. Building's in good condition, has undergone many improvements in the past decade, including you can see those listed there. The city pays its, its required expenses from the general fund. Total expenses approximate about thirty-four thousand dollars per year for utilities and structural maintenance. Some years it's more than thirty-four, depending on how much maintenance we have to do or required by contract to do certain maintenance items. Large capital expenses have been largely paid for by federal, state, and local grant funds. You can see the Forest Grove Senior and Community Centers current services they offer. Meals on Wheels, Friday dinners, foot clinics, Red Cross, exercise classes, hobby classes, activity classes, garden spaces, and receptions and events. Annual budget is approximately two hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. And they, their source of revenues, as you can see, is bingo is about sixty thousand dollars per year for them. The rentals are about thirty-three thousand dollars and fundraising is a hundred and seventeen. So you can see it's over half, fundraising is over half their operating budget. Rentals includes meals on wheels, journeys, gift shop, concessions, rotary, birthday receptions and events. Pride Connection has free office and parking. The staff comprise seventy percent of all expenses. What?
Sure. Whoops. Uh, with regard to the rentals, some of those rentals are longer term. They actually have a lease type agreement that may extend, for example, through twenty twenty-five. Other rentals are episodic, so you just come in and you rent it for like that Sunday or for a Kin Sierra or something like that as a potential event. And then the gift shop is actually set up on, on a concession. Um, the only thing I would add is that the city does have to approve any subleases. So if it's got an extended period, I think beyond twelve months, the city essentially co-signs that lease for those particular entities. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, great.
She brought me another one. Okay, what do other cities do? We've looked at what are the other cities in the area doing? As you can see, no other city has a not-for-profit operate the senior center or the community center, depending on how they have it named or senior community center. You'll either see a city parks and recreation department or a district park and recreation department. Like, for example, Beaverton, that'll be Twalton Hills Parks and Rec.
This, this is not to say, however, that they don't have like a nonprofit that does senior services. It's just that that nonprofit doesn't have an exclusive use operation agreement with the city. So the city may have overall management and they may partner with a nonprofit through like a friends group or something like that. But it's not, they're just not the principal managers of it, if you will. So not the same type of arrangement that we have here in, in Forest Grove. But a lot of those communities do have a Friends of the Senior Center type organization um, that assists them with fundraising, uh, that assist them with events, uh, those kinds of things.
The staff's been discussing options and some of the options, two of the options we came up with is request for proposals. This would essentially consider the current service model where you probably have a not-for-profit still running the center. Not saying the current services would be offered, but would, would retain the current service model. And we could change the terms of operations. For example, we could change the amount of the city subsidy one. That's something the council wished to do. City management, was it the other option we looked at? Service model would transition to city staff management. Services would likely be different if it was offered. It would still be some programs geared toward seniors, but there'd probably be more programs geared toward the community as well. And the uh, Forest Grove Senior Center Corporation would trans, transition to a more of a supporting entity, like kind of similar to the Friends of the Library. They have expressed interest in providing some assistance or, and also being able to do some of their annual events that they do, such as the car show continuing those. Sure.
So what staff tried to do with this slide is to kind of help the council maybe talk through some of these issues is just to put up these topics to see and get a better sense of where, where does the council kind of want to go with this facility? What services do you maybe want to offer? And then we can kind of look at what kind of model might fit that, if you will. Um, and so anyways, these were just some considerations that we thought might help with the discussion here tonight. Kind of what's your vision for the senior center? Uh, actually, I should call it the senior and community center. It's actually the Forest Grove Senior and Community Center. What kind of services might you like to see out of that center? We showed you a list of the services that are being provided right now. Is there services that you, other services that you would like to see there? The funding, what about the funding? Right now it's kind of a fundraising approach. Um, the city contributes about thirty-five thousand. The senior center comes up with the rest of it. They do it through exclusive use of the facility and then also through some fundraising. Uh, the only thing that I would note is that, you know, this was, the senior center per se was not necessarily included in the levy. Um, and so that's just kind of something to keep in mind. What's the service model? Like, what's the most, you know, sustainability of a service model? Which one would the council look at? Arguably, the existing model that we've had has been sustainable. It's been in place since nineteen seventy-two, essentially. It's had an agreement since nineteen ninety-two. Um, so it's been a pretty sustainable model, but we're at this inflection point here where the senior center has said, you know, we just kind of can't do this anymore, uh, and they want the council to consider that. As you can see from the previous slide, there's also a sustainable model with, with cities having some additional involvement in it. Um, I think there's a question about service providers, uh, who could potentially do this if a nonprofit was to kind of pick this up through potentially an RFP process? Um, how does this integrate with other city services? Is there other things that the city is doing that might be able to integrate this? And then, of course, the last one is the kind of timing and transition. I think it's important to note in our conversation with the senior center, and I want to, I want to compliment Adam Cole, who is here in the, in the back. Adam, you can raise your hand. And also Mr. Dyke, uh, those are the chair and the co-chair of the senior center board. Uh, we've been in conversations with them after they sent this letter, and that's where we got a lot of the information for the presentation. So just, just an FYI there. So anyways, with that, I think we're here to try and answer any questions that you might have. Um, and then uh, let's see if we might be able to get some kind of potential direction or additional research or issues we should look into or something like that. We just kind of needed to get a sense from the council about where you may want to go with this and, and what you might want to do. Uh, and then we can potentially take it from there and then come back to the council with, with some additional proposals or variances of the proposals we've, we've had tonight. So with that, thank you, Mayor and members of the council.
Thank you. Before we start with questions, I, I want to thank the volunteers at the Forest Grove Senior Center and Community Center, those on the board, those who have worked Meals on Wheels, First Friday, um, just countless amounts of hours. And looking at that graph and, I mean, I knew this in my brain, but just the, I mean, you're providing services to our community, but then also funding, trying to figure out a way to fund it over and over again. And I can imagine it felt like a hamster wheel of just constantly like not breathing. So I do just really wanted to say thank you for helping the City of Forest Grove provide essential services to our community. Um, with that, I'm going to open it up to questions from the council. Any questions? Any opinions?
Want to go back one slide?
I, I have an opinion.
Got lots of opinions.
I have lots of opinions too. So let's go, let's go back. Let's, let's start with, let's go back to our options, please, Maria. Sorry. So request, so let's talk about option one, request for proposal. Uh, thoughts from the council on this option?
So can we, can we sort of make some statements first before we try and delve into possible options? And full disclosure to the council and to the, the public, I have been a member of the board of the senior center, I think, for the last uh, five and a half year. So I've gone through a lot of the uh, helped them manage their, and, and the trans, and the, the issues with regard to COVID. Uh, I think there's a couple of things that, you know, if you will allow me to elaborate on a few things. The uh, the executive director and the staff at the senior center are paid under, under market wages and do not have benefits of any kind. Uh, that has been the largest, single most difficult thing to deal with with regard to having a sustainable management model. Uh, because it's just difficult to find somebody that has the skill set to uh, do the fundraising and run the programs and spend much of their fundraising efforts just to make their own wage. So the other thing I think that, that is, is interesting uh, that we have just discussed at length was the impact of COVID. COVID, um, uh, we lost a tremendous amount, I think maybe over sixty percent of the volunteers that were working there prior, prior to the COVID. And the number of seniors who attended the different services has significantly dropped off and we've never recovered. That's not to say that you can't find a service provider out there that can make a go of it. On the other hand, we did have the YMCA in there for over a year and nothing materialized out of it because they found out that what they wanted to do and what was being offered were not compatible. So the YMCA didn't work from that perspective. Now, that's not to say that the city can't engage with the YMCA in a different model, okay? Uh, just letting people know some, some other facts. My opinion has been, always been that the city ought to have a management responsibility of the senior center as, and the extension of the Parks and Rec with the community of the senior citizens in our uh, community, just like uh, with services to our youth and, and, and other. So in my opinion, I think that city management in terms of the overall management is, is probably the most sustainable model. How you go from there in terms of actually who, who services the programs is certainly up to, up for discussion. I think that's all I need to say right now.
Yeah, I think I agree with a lot of what you're saying. Just mathematically and, you know, listening to Anne's cost recovery for Parks and Rec. I think, you know, ideally it'd be great if the city could take it over right now, but I just don't see how we would like fund it. Um, so I guess what I'm interested in, so you had mentioned, Jesse, that, so for me, I think, I don't know. I, I do, I mean, if, if money was not an option and we could say like, hey, we have enough staff, like, I would be like, yes, the city should do it. But I guess my question is, is there bandwidth for either a request for proposal to see what options are out there? Or you had mentioned that in that list that said all cities managed it. Then you said, but they were like hybrids. Or is it more real, I guess my question is, is it more realistic right now for? It seems to me that'd be more realistic for us as a city to either send out another request, an RFP, see if there's interest and/or try to develop a new operation agreement that allows us to like continue growing out our recreation department with capacity to help manage and work with another entity. Counselor Martinez.
Would you expand on what model it was that YMCA was in there with initially? Cause I'm not familiar. Cause I'm not familiar with it.
So YMCA was, was given a space. They rented a space. The idea there was for them to expand more on community programs as opposed to necessarily senior programs, although that was, those were not excluded. But again, part of it also had to do with the fact that they were wanting to charge fees for much of this. And, and the demographic that we have simply does not necessarily support that with low income folks that we have. I would defer if the council would permit the president or Adam Cold to, to answer some questions. I would like to defer to him.
Is that fine with the council?
If the council permits having somebody from the public speak.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Can you repeat your question, Counselor Martinez for Mr. Cold?
So Mr. Cold, we'd like some more information about what, how the program was set up with YMCA initially when they were utilizing this space previously.
Yeah, so they did have a office that we had given them to work out of the senior and community center. And there was a small fee that they were paying for that. In turn, they were planning on bringing in programs that both benefit children. It would potentially benefit sports. They also talked about having a number of senior programs. And as Councilman Rippe has stated, those senior programs didn't work out because the demographic wasn't willing to pay. So we tried this program for about a year and at the end of that time, the YMCA decided to leave the senior center. We were really hoping to create some synergies there, but it just did not happen.
Is there an opportunity within a request for proposal? Could you do an operation agreement that is a hybrid model or?
Yeah, I, I think depending on where the council may want to go, I think you could fashion some type of agreement that really blends with the services that you want to provide and kind of the, the operational structure you may want. Now, I guess I'll kind of give you a potential example. Right, right now, the way it's really structured is is this Forest Grove Senior Community Center, the nonprofit, has exclusive use of the facility, exclusive programming, and they're also responsible for all the fundraising, all the staff, virtually everything associated with the senior center. The city's role in it is pretty limited. Our role is every year we go through a budget cycle. The city pays for the utilities except for natural gas. And we contribute a structural maintenance requirement that's been used to make repairs that are beyond the day-to-day repairs. But other than that, in terms of programming, staffing, financial decisions, all of that is separate and done by the nonprofit. And some other communities, what we've seen, and I'm not sure, I think hybrid would probably be the word, depending on, on how it's looked at is, in some cases, you may have the city have a more active role. They may have an office, for example, in the senior center, but they may have an agreement with a nonprofit that helps them with fundraising, that helps them do like bingo because they can't get a gaming license, that helps them with certain, certain programs that they can put on, those types of things. So kind of a, more of a partnership, if you will, in terms of kind of how it's managed and how the programs are delivered. In other areas, what we've seen is the city does, does everything almost. And what I mean by that is it would have city personnel. The city would come up with the programs, with the services, but they would also have to have some type of rate and fee structure that would sustain that. So sustaining that meaning, you know, what staff expenses would be associated with it? All of the supplies, the materials, the programming, all that sort of stuff. And so you kind of, you know, our model right now is, it's different than those other ones, but it's, it's, it's mostly the nonprofit, if you will. The nonprofit is heavily involved in the maintenance and operations and the city has a very limited role. We've seen it where there's been more, for lack of a better way to, to say it, more of a 50-50 kind of thing. And then we've seen it kind of the other way where the, where the city does almost everything. And the nonprofit, if there is one, may have a very minor role, if any. So, but it kind of just depends, I think, on what the vision would be from the council, what type of services you may want to offer. And then I think, you know, part of what we still have yet to do is talk with the senior center board about what does a potential transition plan look like? What might they still be interested in doing? The one thing that really kind of kicked this conversation off was the notification that the operation agreement, as of November 15th, the senior center intends to no longer have that. And that's what really kind of started this conversation, Mayor. So that's a long way of answering your question. Sorry.
I think my, the reason that I, at this point in the process, am looking more towards option one is because we're halfway through a five-year levy. The senior, this wasn't included in the budget. I think how, we go back to the graph of their costs. Yeah, so they got, where expenses are 210, right now we're paying 35. I just don't know where we would get that money and we don't fundraise. So like at some, like, I guess I'm just, don't know how we would do it. I don't, and I kind of wanted to hear from Director Lane. I'm like, we're just going to bring everyone up, but I mean, where are we, like, we're building out a recreation program. Like you're building out a cost recovery program. Where does this fit into those, your goals, objectives and your? Let's see how many more people we can get up here. I ask you to repeat that. Okay, so is this realistic for option two? For us to do this starting in November?
It's going to be a stretch. Yeah. There's desire for Parks and Recreation. The reality is there's a great expense to this. We don't currently have a staffing structure to really accommodate the full operation of the center. But I think there's room for some creative problem solving. So not a no, it's not a yes.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, questions? Counselor Marshall.
I would like to see it stay with a nonprofit, running it as similar to how the senior center, or the senior center had previously ran it. It, they were running it for decades. I mean, it just, it ran into a hiccup after COVID. That's understandable. They're kind, they're worn out, but new ideas, doing similar things could work. But I think going forward, looking if there is an option for another nonprofit to take it over.
Counsel, Counselor Guston.
Mr. Cold, is, does the nonprofit have any monetary assets that can help with the management until a permanent budgetary solution can?
Yeah, so the, the center has assets to the tune right now of about $300,000 that we have in various funds that we've invested in. As a board, we've, we've talked about the potential for that to be shared with the city to help with transitional operational costs. So thank you for bringing that, that up. A good segue. I can't speak for the board as to what value that would be. The board would have to have a discussion and decide. But that's something that the board could, could likely help with. In addition, the board is really interested in helping to provide, continue to provide programming. So for most of us, we got on the, for all of us, we got on the board to make there be available lots of senior programs and senior activities. And it's something we haven't been able to achieve because we've been focused on operational cost payrolls and which is most of our expenditures. And then it just, the, the business model itself doesn't work. So while I appreciate another, you know, potential nonprofit coming up, my personal opinion is the business model just is not working. It's, it's something that someone could probably come in, but they're going to be in this constant fundraising activity again. So is it, does it answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Rippe, do you want to say something?
So I, I, I think the, a hybrid model is a good model to look at for transition. I think the end goal should be that the city take over the operations. But realistically, as you've pointed out, the budget's not there yet. It was not part of the levy. I think we have another two years on the existing levy before we go out to the voters again. So I, I think that the realization that there might be some monetary assets that help facilitate that is important to realize that I think we need to, to look at whatever options we have to move in the direction of a city, assuming that the full operations of it, with the assistance of a nonprofit helping with fundraising. I think that's, I think that's an obligation of the city toward its senior citizens. I think that also that based upon the research that we've done on the board, the demographics that this, that who are currently using the services is, are, are those that continue to live in their own homes. The folks that are from the retirement and, and senior centers are, are not availing themselves of, of the services anymore since COVID. So there's, there's just a tremendous amount of, of work that, and opportunities that have been tried. We've tried many, many, many different options and nothing seems to be sticking. So the board is understandably very fatigued and frustrated. So I wouldn't recommend a hybrid option of some sort.
I keep pressing the button. The question was kind of asked earlier, I think 70% of the, the senior centers expenses go to staffing right now. An annual budget of about $210,000. I, I would, and, and in some senior centers that we've seen, when we did kind of an analysis, normally it's staffed. If it is fully staffed by the city, if it's in a, a community of approximately our size, normally it consisted of a coordinator position and/or potentially a manager position. And then it normally had some type of assistant as well. So from an FTE perspective, this is a very broad range, but generally it was one and a half to two positions for, for the municipality or for the district, whatever it was running it. It did depend on the size of the senior center. If it was a larger senior center like Hillsborough, that would be more. If it was a smaller senior center, then that would be fewer. It also depended on the amount of services they provided. If they had a lot of, you know, classes, that could be more. If they had trips and travel and things like that, it could, it could also more so. There were some variances. How many, I'm just curious how many they had in McMinnville when, that runs the McMinnville Senior Center.
So there were two full-time employees and four temporary staff that acted as cashiers.
Is it premature, so wait, let's, let me double check really quick. Is there consensus to go out for an RFP in some sort of hybrid fashion? I've heard three of us say that. So I just want to see, I haven't heard from.
I support RFP. I mean, it, the hybrid fashion would really come down to what the contract looks like, but I, I say send it out to RFPs.
So is there any way to do both? You go out for an RFP and one is like a hybrid, so you kind of get an idea of what the two are?
Yeah, I think that you would go out for the request for proposal and then see the options and then look at the operation agreement to try to build in the capacity for some, right? Is that, am I accurate? Am I not accurate?
So it might help if we go to the last slide potentially. My, if, if the city looks to go out for an RFP, I think some of the questions that we would be asking is, would you want to send an RFP out kind of in the existing structure and see if there's another nonprofit out there that would be willing to kind of do this, but also potentially partner with Forest Grove Senior Community Center? Does that kind of even exist? I think that's a question mark. I don't think we know that. I don't know if like a YMCA would be interested or another group that has specialized interest in these kinds of services would be interested. I, I just don't know that we know. I think the city would ask ourselves the question of the space, recognizing that the space is approximately 40% utilized right now. I think one of the internal questions the city is probably going to ask itself is, what can we do to get better utilization out of the building? And, and what might that look like in a hybrid type approach? Is there an opportunity to potentially partner with the senior and community center and/or another nonprofit? You know, maybe the city has an office there, for example. Maybe we use it for some recreation programming, but not all. If that's something that, you know, the recreation program would be interested in. I don't know the answers to those questions, but I think those would be some of the conversation topics that we would want to engage pre-RFP, but also with Forest Grove Senior Community Center before potentially putting together an RFP. Those are some of the key questions that I think we would be asking. From a timing and transition perspective, I, I think we, this would be a priority for us. We would want to start looking at this relatively quickly, given the, I know the, the senior centers has some, some time constraints as well. And so, but we would want to make sure that there wasn't, I guess the governing factor there would be, we'd want to make sure that there isn't a lapse in service, whether it's provided by the senior center, whether it's done by, by another nonprofit or whether it's done by the city. We would want to make sure that the services that are there now would continue, whatever that would look like.
Okay, so I'm going to rewind you a little bit. Is the very first, it's fine. Is the very first question, do we want to do an RFP with the conditioning, with the, what's going on right now, right? With the current service? I'm good. I mean, I feel like that's a good place to start because that's what's been going on. But, but I guess what I want to say though too, is that I really do agree with Counsel President Rippe that long-term, why, I just know a couple of things from doing this job for a while. The community is the most successful when we have really good, solid partnerships. And so, you know, regret, not regret, or like trying to figure out this dance the city has been doing with the senior center board for the last 10 years. Like, I don't know. I mean, I think we try, but I just think that what I would like to see, and I, I think Counsel Guston's right, that's not until the operation agreement, but I just want to make sure there's capacity for the city to like be a partner in there and to grow into the role of taking it over. Cause that, the long-term vision might come out with our, you know, Forest Grove Forward, that, that's what the community wants. So I'm fine with it doing it currently, but I would like to see somehow, whether it's one office space, somehow where the city is also still connected with the nonprofit. Anyone else? Okay, Counsel Guston.
So with it, within the RFP, I mean, I, I agree, we can send the RFP out for, you know, a like service. But within the RFP, we can also put that we are open to, you know, option one, two, and three. Two and three being what would, what would this model look like partnering with the senior community center board? What would this model look like, including the city? You can put that into the RFP to see if whoever's going to respond might have some options that would include partnerships and what that might look like. They might have great ideas.
Yeah, I would be hesitant to include anything for another nonprofit. Like I wouldn't, I mean, I, I just think then in our agreement, it's between whoever's applying for that and the city. Like the, the, if the senior, if the senior center board helps afterwards, like, cause they're not our entity, right? Like, so I just, and I think too, like the only thing I would say with the RFP is you don't want to get so many details in that people are like, oh, well, this doesn't fit. Then we're not going to, I don't know. And we're not going to apply because there's this entity, there's this entity. I don't know what's.
One of the, maybe, maybe the way to address that is one of the key things in the existing operating agreement is it is exclusive use. So if the Forest Grove Senior Community Center does a sublease, if they do a rental, if they do a concession, all of that revenue goes to the nonprofit. And that's, that's designed to allow that nonprofit to try and be sustainable, to try and accommodate that business model so that they could take that and put that into programming for, for senior and community center services. I think one of the key questions would be in the RFP, if it would still be for exclusive use of the facility and if the nonprofit would retain, you know, the revenues to be able to provide these programs. able to provide these programs. So that'd be one thing I think we would want to probably consider. And then I think the next one would be probably term. What I've kind of generally heard here is potentially, you know, we're looking at two to three years because we have a levy, right? And so what does that look like? And would somebody be willing to kind of try it for a couple of years? That's, that's something that you would just put in and, and see if somebody responds to it. So, yeah.
Do you want us to answer the, whether or not we want it for exclusive use right now?
I think that would be a key question. If, if we put an RFP out, let's say for just example, for two years, if we would want to keep it exclusive use, I think that's been a pretty key cornerstone to enabling the Forest Grove Senior and Community Center to be able to raise sufficient funds to provide programming. And so I, I think if staff, I think we would look pretty heavily at having that be an incentive potentially if the council was okay with that in an RFP.
So just one comment I want to make is I think it's real dangerous to say, to take away exclusive use and then limit the agreement for two years, because I don't know anyone that would want to take that on for two years. So I, I think that, I think we as a governing body need to really like think, is the city going to be ready in two years or do we just say, hey, are we going to do this? I don't know, I just think that this is an interesting thing. I don't think two year, I mean, the two years has me more concerned than I guess the exclusive.
Sometimes what you can do is an initial, I, I, I think the kind of bigger question is if we want to do an RFP and look for another nonprofit. I think as you mentioned, Mayor, you're right, exclusivity would be a very probably key incentive to get somebody to potentially submit a proposal. What you can always do is you can make it for a certain duration, but then you can have an option to extend, right? Depending upon the performance and if the objectives are being met and if the services are being provided and it's financially sustainable and all those things that we've talked about. So you, you can, you can make it so that there's a short-term part, but then also the potential for a long-term part depending on, on how it works.
What did you want to say, Mr. Downey?
The current levy expires June 30th of 2028. So you've got more.
So you can do maybe three.
You've got more than two years anyway.
Yeah. What, Council, Council, Council President Rippe?
Yeah, I've already stated my view. I, I do think that the city needs to have more quote unquote ownership other than just a staff liaison and a council liaison. I, I think if, if the long-term solution or goal is for the city to take it over, there ought to be some more engagement. Not that Andrew hasn't done a fabulous job, that he has. The only, the other thing notwithstanding whatever decision we make here, there needs to be some discussion around messaging now, because the community is getting a lot of rumors about the center closing, about seniors being disregarded. There's, there needs to be some proactive messaging from both the city and the nonprofit as to what's going on here.
Agreed. What is our term of agreement? So when you say the term is three years, two years, what's our term of agreement right now with the?
Right now, it's essentially a perpetual agreement that's, it's, it's cancelable by one or either party. So it's a, it's, there is no expiration on the existing agreement. And it was, there used, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, I think there used to be an expiration, but then when it got amended in 2010.
It renews automatically.
It renews automatically unless canceled by, by one of the other parties, by either party.
During an RFP process, can you, when you're doing the applica, I just am like trying to think of like, I mean, I just feel like there's different nonprofits, so it'd just be interesting to see like how, I don't know. What if someone wants to, I mean, are we completely against, what if a nonprofit came in and wanted to help the city facilitate the programming and run it for the next 20 years? Are we going to say that's a bad thing just because it's not the city? Or is there, is what Council President Rippe said, is it just that we need to build out a better system where there's a, a more succinct partnership, right? Or more like localized voice and cooperation between entities? I don't know, sorry. I'm thinking.
I think you, I think you really, one thing you really need to talk about if we're going to do the RFP is the services. Because I think if, one of you mentioned doing a RFP with the current services. If you do an RFP with the current services, we already know that business model doesn't work. So I think that's part of, of the discussion. I, I think I probably agree with that. I think as part of the discussion we need to have is if we're going to do an RFP, what type of services might we be looking at?
Would it be more general, more generalized instead of like the list of what services are providing? Would it be like activities, recreation activities, gathering opportunities for people who, you know, are 55 and older? And then also youth activities, like, and it could, I mean, it is senior center and community center, but can it be just more of an umbrella?
Yeah. It's.
That's exactly the, and maybe, I don't know if it would help to maybe go back to the current services, but I think maybe the question would be, if the building's kind of only, you know, 40 to 50% utilized, these services are being offered, are there other broader categories of services, whether it is for youth, whether it is for, you know, certain populations that you would, that, that you would want to see put into an RFP? Certainly the existing services would be put into an RFP. Is there something that's missing from that list? I don't know if it would be helpful to go back to that list, Mariah, of current services. And, and this would just help us in terms of fashioning, there we go, of fashioning an RFP. I, I'm not the expert on the existing services. Adam, Adam would be that. I don't know if it's tailored toward seniors of a certain age or if it's tailored toward the community, but, but if there's not something on there that you would like to see, I think staff would like to know so we could put that into the RFP.
Well, I think, you know, what I would like to see included on this list is what I just said, like a generalized for targeted populations, youth, I mean, whatever, but I think too, like, because then people can have, bring their own ideas and say like, oh, well, I can do this like Lego robotic thing, whatever it is they want to do. I just think the idea is that it's a gathering space for people to come and get some sort of service, right? Or recreation. Well, then, Councilwoman Gustin?
Um, I'm, I'm supportive of sending the RFP out that would reflect what it is now and then open it up for, for whoever responds to, you know, give us their ideas, you know, and these services we can provide. And, you know, this would be the business model and, and open it up for, for people, but we're letting them know this is a, a community center with senior services. So those things must be included and how you blossom out of that is, is just what their response is.
So would it be accurate to say some senior centers are, if you look on their website, are for X age and older kind of period? And some senior centers are senior and community centers that have programs for seniors, but they also offer programs for the community as well. But, but I'm, and, and right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but it's the Forest Grove Senior and Community Center, and they do programs for both. So we were just trying to get an idea if we want to continue to try and do programming for both, for all populations within the community and make that part of the RFP. And if that's the case, we can easily do that.
I'm seeing, yes, please. Are there any other direction that you need for? So what's the timeline? Do we need to have the RFP, like another work session, the next meeting? And then what's, can I have a timeline, please?
So November 15th is the, the date that the nonprofit had, had chosen. That is definitely something that we can talk with, with y'all and, and come to a, some, some type of different conclusion. The board just wanted to put something out there to target. It's not something that we're interested in, you know, spending another six months on, but, you know, something within, you know, close to that date would be fine. I do want to note, the nonprofit just rehired Rayanne Johnston as the executive director who had served with us for a number of years before. So she will be, her contract is through March, which we're hoping would be completing some sort of transition. So that is a finite date. That's the only finite date we have.
Okay.
In terms of the broader timeline question, Paul may want to chime in. We, we would need a little bit of time to put together an RFP. Typically, we will advertise that for anywhere from four to six weeks. We'll get proposals back. And then I think probably at that time, we would have a, depending on how many proposals we get, that's probably when we would have a work session with the city council and try to get some additional direction if you want to make any amendments potentially to it. There's lots of, of various options at that point, but that, that's the best I could probably give you at this point, Mayor.
Going to take a little bit of time to get the RFP together, does a staff workload on some other things, and also we need to get together with the senior board, talk them about that before we put the RFP out, so.
Okay. Do you have everything you need from us? Any final comments from the council?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. This work session's adjourned. I'm going to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. This work session topic is LOC, which stands for League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities. And I'm going to turn it over to Jesse.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have a brief staff report. The work session is a, a pretty short work session. I think it's for 15 or 20 minutes, but the staff report is each even numbered year, LOC appoints a bunch of different policy committees. It may ask each city that are members of LOC to provide them with their top five legislative priorities. They don't have to be in order of one through five, but just five of, of our city's top legislative priorities. These priorities get submitted into a ballot. Every city submits their top priorities. The LOC then takes all of those. They amalgamate all of them and they come up with the LOC's top legislative priorities. And so I think the purpose of this work session tonight is to provide you the LOC member voter guide to go over the list of, I think, 23 priorities that LOC came up with and see if the council could get staff some direction on a consensus on the top five. We can bring those top five back in a resolution at the next meeting if you'd like. They do have to be submitted by the end of September, so we have this meeting and the next meeting in which to come to an agreement. And then what staff would do after they get that is they would just input it into the ballot and send it to LOC. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. In our packet was the 23, like little blurbs about the 23 recommended. And then one of the things I asked, and I appreciate that staff did, is staff also included some areas that they think should be priorities. So between, if you read, if you read what they think and then you read the packet, did anyone bring their top five? Do we just want to start sharing out our top five? Okay, Councilor Rippe?
So the top five that I had, and it actually spread out through all the different groups, but infrastructure spending, infrastructure funding, that's co-sponsored by community and economic development and the water and water wastewater committee. For a very brief period of time, I was on this LOC committee and we heard the dire need for assistance from extremely rural communities. They are, they just don't have the funds and they need more assistance if they are going to continue to provide their residents with safe, quality water. Another one that I had was the, as we've already discussed tonight, was the restoration of recreational immunity. We have a Band-Aid and that's all it is, is a Band-Aid. The legislature needs to finish their work on this. I get concerned with promises that they're going to do something without follow-through. And so that's, that's one of my others. Believe it or not, I think there should be some more flexibility with lodging tax flexibility. Not so much here in Forest Grove, although that would be a, a, a help, but as, if we're looking at League of Oregon Cities as a whole, the communities that were hit the hardest and continually are hit hard with tourism are the coastal cities. And they're not able to keep up with their infrastructure needs. So they have all these tourism, they have to spend money on tourism, but they can't spend it on fixing the infrastructure that, and that's just wearing down. So I think that's important as well. Cybersecurity, you know, I read a book about this a number of years ago, and it basically, the bottom line was there are those people who know they've been hacked and people that have been hacked, but they don't know it. So everybody's been hacked, it's just a matter of whether you know it or not. Forest Grove, I think, as I've talked to staff, I think we're very fortunate in that we have taken some exceptional steps in that area. But unless, unless we stay atop of this as a state. But unless, unless we stay atop of this as a state, uh, we're going to become more and more susceptible to, uh, the kind of problems that have our electrical grids and other, uh, utilities are going to get hacked. Uh, it's not going to, it's not going to go well. And the last thing, of course, uh, having been a big fan of transportation, I think the 2025 transportation package, um, is, is a must. We, we, we did a, well, did we, did we in 2017 have one?
Yeah.
We did in 2017, but it didn't really, did it go anywhere? I can't remember. Did it go anywhere?
I think about half of it passed.
About half of it passed. Yeah. So we, we have, we got more transportation. And again, if you're thinking of the entire state, uh, you know, our economy depends upon the transportation, whether you like it or not. And so we need to maintain our bridges and our roads. So I think that that's important. Not that the other things aren't. And LOC will tell you that just because they have a top list, doesn't mean that they won't work on the rest. But those are my five top that I, I think from, from both our perspective and the state's perspective, we, we need to focus on. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Guston.
I would, I would definitely have the broadband and cybersecurity on one of the top five.
So the five that I listed were, um, sh- the shift from gas tax to road usage fee, the 2025 transportation package, full funding and alignment for housing production, employment lands readiness and availability, and community resiliency and climate planning. Those are the five I listed. Uh, one of, I mean, the, uh, part of me wonders this, you know, the shift from gas tax to rose, road user, usage fee, I think is going to happen. I don't know if we need to elevate that. I think. But then again, I, it's just really, really important. Uh, right now, just maintenance wise. I mean, I kind of go back and forth, but I feel like if we don't say it's important, then they're going to continue to not address this major shortfall with transportation funding. Um, and I think that employment lands, I think that what ends up happening, if you look at economic development in Washington County, that if we don't have most tax, it, it's better for cities to have, like, those industrial sites, like that's where you can make some money to help your community. And the further you get out in Washington County, the more it's residential. And so then it basically is another cycle of how to keep some towns with less revenue than other communities. And so I think that that's really, really important. And I, in the community resiliency and climate planning. Counselor Rippey, and I agree, said this, one of the best things 50, I mean, 75 years ago, I don't even know how long, is our watershed, like, is so valuable to the city of Forest Grove. Um, wildfires are, I mean, this is like the worst thing, right? With emergency, so I just feel like this is kind of what our legacy that we could help give is to really create this resiliency and climate planning to help protect our community. So those are my five. Anyone else?
I have all five, but.
Yeah, which ones are you thinking?
Yeah, the, um, I also have the, the infrastructure, I think that's immensely important. Um, community resiliency and, uh, climate. And I also have the, uh, cybersecurity.
Martinez.
I had infrastructure funding as well, cybersecurity, um, behavioral health enhancement. And then the shift from gas tax to road tax. I haven't done the fifth one. I'm waiting on that.
Okay, so four, is there, so, oh, Counselor Martinez.
Infrastructure funding. Um, recreational immunity. Um, cybersecurity. Yeah, we definitely need this shift from the gas tax to road user fee. And then I'm, yeah, not sure between behavioral health and addiction.
Okay, so the, the two that we are, that there's consensus for is the infrastructure package, right?
Yeah.
And cyber security? Is that what it was called? I, AI and cybersecurity or something like that? I didn't have that one written down, so I don't know.
Cybersecurity and privacy, yeah.
I can, I can shift my lodging tax to the shift from a gas tax to a road.
Yeah, then we'll go gas. Go gas tax to road.
Just feel sorry for those communities out in the coast.
Uh, the community resiliency.
Yeah, can we, is there, I heard two people that go support for community resiliency and climate planning. I think it just goes good to with our emergency operation plan that we're going to have and our. No one, I only heard two. Is there any other support to add that one? Is there any support to add employment land readiness or anything with housing?
Oh, yeah. I don't know if anyone else.
Let's look at the, in the staff memo, can we pull up the staff memo? Staff had suggest, had made some of their suggestions. The last paragraph of that staff memo.
Yeah, it's the last.
A little bit.
Last, uh.
It's okay.
Last paragraph?
Yeah. So they were saying infrastructure funding, employment land readiness.
And just a little bit of background behind that, Mayor, each director was asked for their single top priority. And so that was the list that we got back from all of the directors. And actually, the question was not necessarily their top legislative priority, but what would be the most beneficial priority for you in your department?
Again, they're all important. And.
I would, oh, go ahead.
So I, I made the earlier suggestion about council letter to, uh, I, I think this, that is a, it's a strategy to use, not frequently, because it becomes meaningless. But it is a strategy council needs to take into consideration, especially with respect to legislation at the state level. If, if the council can agree on a specific piece of legislation to support, then the council's vote needs to be heard by our representative. It's much, much more powerful than if we say something individually. But to this point here, they're all good.
Yeah. So, Mike, I want to clarify, would you say, would, would you like to see recreational immunity as one of our five? Or would you like to see us say like, hey, we can promote something else to the five and, and, and then also, and then instead of elevating it to the five?
I would agree with that kind of approach. That's, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at with this, the, our awareness and our reaction to things that are going on at the state level. If we take the approach of a, of a council letter to, to legislators on a particular topic, then it wouldn't need to be one of our top five here.
Right.
I mean, the, the reason, the, the reason to vote for it here is because then it becomes LOC. And so you have a statewide lobbying group specifically spending time and focusing on those issues with the le- legislature, not just our. So by doing a council letter to our, let, our, our, uh, representatives is impactful, but it's not, it's certainly more, uh, it's more, it, it's, uh, I don't think of the word, without getting military. It's tactical, not strategic. LOC approach would be a strategic approach because it has a much wider coverage. Ours would be a very tactical approach to affect, uh, to, to convince a few, uh, representatives. And I am not opposed to that. I, I, I would be in favor of that in this particular case. I'm just trying to bring the council's awareness to how we could approach these things a little bit better than we have in the past.
I think that's a good approach as well. So. I, I think it's important to. I'm trying, I'm trying, so we have infrastructure, cybersecurity and privacy and gas tax. So I'm trying to think. I'm looking at our departments and kind of our full service. I think one of the last two, and I think something for land use, like something for development and would be appropriate, but.
Yeah, I would think affordable challenges from rising utility costs, because that's impacting people. Now, lower income especially.
So what do you guys all think about that?
Well, I, 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 I I like the behavioral health enhancements as well. We, we have never, we have not ever funded, uh, mental health issues is, as much as we, we, and then it's almost insurmountable, the need, but we, we need to do more there.
Yeah, and right now with the, the new defer deflection program that the county is going to administer, it's still underfunded. Like the state, you know, changed some things, but they still didn't give enough funding. Do you want to add that one?
That's fine.
Is that, is there consensus on that? Behavioral, I don't remember what it, can't really read my hand.
Behavioral health enhancements.
Hopefully Jesse's writing this down too.
I got it.
Okay, so then we have one last one, so. Employment land readiness, restoration of, well, no, we're not going to do that. Transportation, we didn't do the transportation package, but. Community resiliency and climate planning action, address energy affordability challenges from rising. I really, I'm going to, I really would like the employment land readiness and availability. But that, like, kind of gives us a little holistic, but.
Well, I, I think the, I, I, I don't, I agree with that. But I think the one that's community resiliency and climate planning, I read through that and it's so vague. I have no idea what it means. So I would re- I think there's more specificity around employment.
Well, I, I think we would just refer to any kind of, uh, preparedness for, uh, disaster like fires and things like that.
That's what they're.
Yeah, so it's.
Airquake, the earthquake we're all waiting for.
Trying to be proactive because what was, like after, like what you were saying about the Oregon coast towns with tourism, but like back in 2020, a lot of the small communities in, by Detroit, like, right, lost. And then the first, so like the first priorities for the league was like, try to get that gap funding from the feds, right? And now I think this, these priorities would be like to create more investment to protect and mitigate fires, so to pre.
So you're trying to decipher what they're saying, employment lands readiness?
No, I was explaining the, the community resiliency.
Oh, okay, okay. So how about the employment lands readiness availability? What specifically does that relate to?
It relates to like your zoning your industrial sites, your shovel ready, like, you know, businesses can come in and be ready to go. So it's like your industrial, so.
Well, I, I, I would switch mine to the community resilience, climate plan.
From, and not do the employment land? Okay, I'm fine, like, I'm fine with either of those groups. I think they're both. I really would like to see some sort of community resilience for the employment. We have three for, right now we have three people in favor for community resiliency and climate planning resource. Is there anyone else that we can get on that ticket? How many people would be for employment land readiness? Me, no one else? Okay, so, and with, will someone else throw a topic out that they heard? We have one space left.
Yeah.
One more.
What do we have so far?
We have infrastructure, cybersecurity and privacy, gas tax to road usage fee and behavioral health enhancement.
What about the 2025 transportation?
We do not have that on.
Well, that's also quite important. So if more people would support that, maybe that could be our. Mike, you would just support that?
I would. I was looking actually at the community safety and neighborhood livability one. Or is?
Would anyone support the transportation 2025? I would support that, it was on the list. I have two. All right, I need to say it. Three. Don't know. Don't, you would?
I'm just.
Would you support transportation?
Sure.
Okay.
Please get people to agree at this time of the night.
So we used to, I know, was that like, Tim knows, but we used to just do it separate and we would just email Anna what the five we wanted, and then she would tally up our votes and pick. But I was like, let's try to have a collaborative conversation. I don't know if it works or not.
This is better way to do it than it was.
Yeah, right? Okay.
This is better than doing it the way we.
Okay, well, that's good. Okay, so I'm going to adjourn this work session of the Forest Grove City Council.